It is 6 o'clock. I call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Hack, you have that down?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Half the three years. I got that. I got that gavel. All right. So we will adopt the agenda later. So we are looking for the oath of new officers.
And we don't have any new members, so we don't worry about that.
Okay, but it's showing, it's showing the agenda first.
Yep.
But on this, it's not saying officers first.
I can type it out to where I do 01 would be going through these.
Do the agenda first?
I can, well, we should approve the agenda, but then I can do these in a different order when I, if I have to type it up.
We don't have any.
I should not jump the gun.
New school board members. We don't have any, so we can bypass that one.
Okay, okay.
So then we can go right to the election of the chairperson.
Okay, see, because it says agendas first. So that's why I'm like.
Well, once we get to six, but we haven't gotten to that.
But not enough at number four.
Okay, okay. All right, good thing I'm coming out of this seat. All right, looking for a nomination for board chair.
I'll nominate Lindsey.
Can I second it?
All right, there's a nomination and a second. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. All right, here you go.
Thank you.
Yes.
Half the three years.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I wanted you to take over just like that.
Yep.
Just like that.
Oh, my.
That's called not missing a beat.
Right, wow.
Congratulations. You all ready again?
Ready as all to be. Okay, so let me get my papers in order here. So, um, let's see, we have 6.0. Do we have an adopt agenda? Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Are we tabling the seniority list or are we not?
Oh, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, we discussed the other names.
Seniority list, we're okay on. The one that shouldn't have been on there was the high school course guide.
Oh, okay, high school.
And they're okay on the, um, they're okay on, we haven't had anybody else contact us about seniority list changes, so that should be okay. We made, we made two other ones over the past week, so we should be good.
Okay, so.
But the course guide is.
Course guide, we'll have to table that when we get to it.
It's just changed a little bit.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. That's all right. I'm gonna need your help, dear. Um, okay, so we're gonna leave the certified seniority list and then tabling the high school course guide. Course guide, all right.
Make a motion.
All right, Sandy will make a motion. You have a second?
Second.
Seconded by David. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion carries. Okay. Public comments or rebel recognition? Doesn't look like we have any comments. Thank you, ladies, for coming. Mr. Mark will be pleased. Um, and no rebel recognition. We need to get that going again. We haven't had one in a while, so maybe next time we can work on that.
Well, we just did the first week of school. But we do have one coming for the next. We have the kids that were down for the Mado assembly last weekend. So they know, they're going to be doing a presentation.
Okay.
So we'll get that scheduled.
Perfect. All right, on to reports. 8.1, board committee reports. Anybody, you had any?
The oversight committee, well, the only, well, big change for me was the three-station gym is back down to about a two-and-a-half station gym. Other than that, it's, we talked about moving the loading up front, which would, well, now it'll be the back, filling in the gap, maybe moving the classrooms. They were gonna all plot that out. I'm sure we'll talk about it this week when we're down in Minneapolis. But other than that, really wasn't a lot. I was a little concerned about the current roof over the wrestling room because we created now a tunnel, but we're gonna beef up the roof so it can take it because it's an 11-foot nine-inch difference. You got gym, gym, 11-foot nine-inch drop in between. The engineers slash architect said that they could take care of that and it wouldn't not, we wouldn't be hearing about it again, which was my big concern, especially after the week before.
Yep.
So, other than that, I don't think there was any real major, um, changes.
It was, it was really the first time that most people saw these maps, so meeting went longer than, because even.
We went till 3:45.
Yeah, the day before, you know, I was just talking with some of the admin team as the day went on today because originally we were hoping to have a meeting administratively, like, so that when we have these oversight committee meetings, so that I can meet with them a few days in advance. So that way, if, and we were originally trying to get the meeting from Monday, that way I'd be able to go through some of the topics with those particular administrators that would be, so we didn't, so we wouldn't end up getting on tangents at these oversight meetings. And that's what happened a little bit because there's a lot to go through. But I want you to have hard copies of the maps. These are also in that shared folder, so you have access to all these maps. And as we get new ones, we'll keep on updating it into that. But, and we have plenty of time to talk about this stuff down the cities. And even after the meeting tonight, if you got questions on it, that we'll get through the meeting and we can, we can do a little brainstorming. So, we have, there's been really, I think Jake and I spent probably, well, we started our meeting on last Thursday with them. I think we went, well, we went straight from like 3:00 something to 5:30 or 5:45 the day before, so, yeah, it's gonna be a lot of fun to just go through and, and see what are the possible changes. And we, we need to have some of these discussions before we hit the staff development meeting that takes place next Monday. So part of this is, so our principals can have meetings with their leadership teams this week to bring them up to speed a little bit more before we hit the meeting with all the general staff next week, so that it's not a free-for-all.
Anybody else?
Basically the lobby part, meet and greet, whatever you wanna call it.
At which side?
The high school?
At the high school. That's back in play because we dropped it back from the three station. Three station would have basically eliminated that. Now it's back in.
You mean you're talking about that community room?
Well, the whole, it's combining, so the entryway is combining both the theater entrance and coming from the other side. So it'll be just one big one and you can, you'll notice, when you, when you look at the drawing, they don't have it all colored in, but the entryway's much bigger again. And then there's the tickets and concessions all in the middle, so, but.
And in Dilworth, the concessions, Dan kinda got put back into play in that one story here, which we just need to have. If we're gonna do this, for the walls that it takes and whatever, at least it's, it's back in play. Because that was taken out, now it's back in.
That's good. We need that.
Yeah, we do.
Any other committee reports?
We met with negotiations last week, last Tuesday. We pretty much are done with, ULA was the big thing that took the most time, but we came to understanding on that and we had just a few different changes, mainly in the contract. It was a, this, a comma was forgotten, or it should be is, and that was just a typo and things, and so we have an agreement as far as the language and we are meeting next Tuesday and going over the pieces of pie now.
And I'd like to meet just briefly after the meeting with you guys, as, while I was having that conversation.
Do you have anything to add to that, David? I don't.
No, I don't think so. I mean, brief discussion on the piece of the pie, so to speak, but, yeah, that's all gonna come into play next Tuesday.
Anybody else? All right, superintendent report 8.2.
So you have those maps, and like I said, we can, we got plenty of time down the cities to talk about that stuff, so I'm, I'm looking forward to those. Few things. I'm, next week I have a meeting with our admin cabinet, and so we're gonna have a discussion about a couple of different meetings. I think we're, we're definitely, now that we have some maps to work with, that are starting to hone this thing in, the picture in a little bit more, it's time, we need, from an admin, admin cabinet standpoint, we need to have, we'll either have some type of a Saturday retreat, something like that, very much in the next two, three weeks. And then also at the same time, right after that, I think we need to set up a board work session with that admin cabinet, so that we can talk about where we're going with this stuff and what is the admin, what is the, what are we thinking it's gonna look like over the next, next year and the following year? So there's a couple of steps that we gotta get, to get into place for this stuff. My point is, I think we can have, we, I think we have, have to, we definitely need to have a full picture of what that's gonna be looking like for next year and the following year, by the time we get through February at the latest. Because if there's any changes, anything that's gotta be done, we gotta get moving on it. So that's, did anybody want to get registered for the intergovernmental retreat? Because we're gonna do those registrations tomorrow.
That's on Thursday, the 24th?
That's on Friday, the 24th.
Okay.
Yeah, which, it, it hits, you know, we're doubling up on meetings left and right because that's also an oversight committee meeting at 1:30. But, you know, the morning session and the first session in the afternoon, I think, those are gonna be some good topics because you're gonna have some leadership from different industries talking about what they go through on workforce development and what they're running into. So from medical, from technology, so on. So those are all gonna be represented, those sectors. So that's gonna be on the 24th, and like I said, Brooke, we really should do the registrations tomorrow, so even if you can only make half day, it's not a big cost, folks. I mean, in the big scheme of things in our professional development, if you wanna pop in for a couple hours, I'd rather get you registered.
You can put me down for that or not yet?
Um, not, not yet. You, anybody?
I think if I can make it, I'll just be popping in in the afternoon.
Okay, so.
Usually they want the numbers for lunch, isn't it?
Exactly.
Yeah. So just assume I'm not gonna be there, but.
But I'll, I'll get both you and Ronnie registered, okay? Then, I think we're getting finalized for a meeting with represent, representatives from St. Elizabeth for Monday, 6:30. If that will work, we've gotta make decisions on who's going to, once we get the leadership. Yep. So we don't have to decide this right away, but when we're down in the cities, whether it's not, I just have to confirm with Father Aggie that, yep, 6:30 works. Their, their finance committee is meeting tonight, right now, at the same time.
It's the 20th.
So he's gonna confirm with them. And then we would do it right in the boardroom in Dilworth and just schedule an hour meeting to talk about it. So that's in the works. The K-5 math committee is gonna be presenting to the board at the next board meeting on the math curriculum purchase. And I told them that's gonna take time. This isn't gonna happen in one night, because the, we're not talking about small dollars. You know, this is a commitment, either six to eight years, of 140 to 160 some thousand dollars. Okay? So it's, it's a big commitment.
What grade levels did you do?
This is K through five, all the way through that. So it's basically covering the cost, you're still gonna have consumables, but, so what will happen is, we'll have teachers that are on the committee, that have gone through this whole process, piloting it and what else not, and they'll be there. And I sat down with, with my, with the two elementary principals and we had great discussion about some of the other factors that, big-picture wise, have to be able to be addressed. They should be ready for questions on them, whether we're talking the finances, whether we're talking professional development, looking at achievement levels, all of those things associated with this. So be ready to fire up some questions, because they should be ready for it. So that's coming. The other thing is, you will be seeing on the 27th for approval of the first of the bigger bills coming from JLG. Okay? And it's six figures, it's over a hundred thousand dollars. But again, this is part of that phase. Remember, they've got a particular percent, like those with phase one and all of that, and they've got them itemized, so you'll have, you'll have an opportunity to stop and see the bills and what else not. So I just want to give you heads up on that. And last but not least, bond sale is tomorrow. So by the time we're down in the cities, we'll be talking about how much, I talked to Matt and to Mike this, late this afternoon, and unless something crazy happens overnight with governments doing something crazy, things have been extremely, they've been monitoring all the sales, and of course, they have sales, Wellington and some of these other school districts that they work with. Right now, the news that they gave me this morning is, they're predicting that we're gonna be able to see a decrease, not only a decrease from 22 to 21 years, but also even maybe potentially a decrease of payment of a hundred thousand dollars. And potentially 500,000 dollars more to work with of actual net. So if they can pull off all of that, I'll be thrilled to have those conversations down there. But we'll know the numbers, they're gonna give me the updates as I'm driving tomorrow. So by 11 or 12, they should have the early numbers, that it'll take afternoon. And then we've gotta line up for one of the officers to sign tomorrow, because we have to have that, we have to have a signature tomorrow, I'm, I'm sorry, by Wednesday morning, because I'll be signing it from Rochester and all of that, and then we need one of the officers to sign it Wednesday morning, because we have a 24-hour window that the signatures have to be to accept it, or they can throw it out.
All right.
That's it.
Down in the cities, do we have a possibility of, after like the last session, hanging out in one of those rooms and using the big screen and pulling up our maps and things, or would we not?
Um, possible, but I think they shut, what's the problem we're gonna run into is, um, you know, those rooms where they, where they have all of these, they're pretty much, one group comes, leaves, the other one starts going in. So my guess is, you know, you think about what happens Friday morning, the vendors are all, they're getting the heck out of there. And so I'm guessing they would charge us to use one of those rooms because, so if anything, it would be a lot easier if we could do, whether we did a breakfast meeting or something like that.
Do that Friday morning.
We do, yeah, because just so that we can, because I think it's gonna be diff, and I'm gonna have to leave this to get back in time for my stuff. It would be easier if we could do it, or even after we get done eating on Thursday, and, because I have a computer with when, I'm trying, we're all gonna have hard copies of this stuff. So we'll figure something out, but it would be nice if we could do it before that last session. So, because I think, I think we'd get charged if we're trying to use something. But it's very likely that JLG, since they have a booth, one of those, they should be able to get us something to work with, to sit down and throw something up. Any other questions for me?
9.1, approval of the December 16th, 2019 regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Amy, second?
Second.
Seconded by Laura. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion carries. All right, so 10.0 is our declaration of associations for possible conflict of interest. This is something we do every year, just to make sure that we don't have vendors that are associated with board members. So, um, do we have anything we read? I don't remember.
You just make a, um, like my son works for home heating and plumbing, so if that happens to be one of the contractors that gets hired, I just need you to announce that ahead of time, he works for them.
My brother-in-law's a Masonry, Masonry, I can't even say the word.
Masonry.
Yep, Mortenson. So if they happen to bid on the, bid on the building, he works for them.
And if something pops up, whenever, is that something that you would just make known throughout the year or something?
Yeah, well, I think if, that before the board would take action, you know, like let's say we go through the RFPs and all of a sudden somebody's going to be getting awarded it, but then it takes board action, you know, because you may not know until something like that happens, but then you could just have it announced publicly at that meeting before the vote.
And then you have a statement from board, you know, that one.
I guess my sister-in-law works for Fox Sanitation here in Glendon, and then my brother-in-law works for Coast. I'm like, I don't know. It's getting a little.
I know, you just.
Just in case.
Anybody else?
Well, trust me, my, my family could be bidding on site prep.
Yeah.
But I don't vote, so I'm not worried about it.
Okay, so 11.0 here, we have election or appointments of officers for 2020. First one we're gonna do here is 11.1, vice chair. Do we have a nomination for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate David.
All right, motion is made by Amy. Seconded, seconded by Ronnie. Is there any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing no other nominations. David, or let's see, Amy moved and Ronnie seconded motion to cast unanimous ballot for David as vice chair. All those in, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? 970.
We have it in both things though.
Pardon me?
We got it feeling both.
Yep, feel in both things. I had to read it there. Amy and Ronnie duly carried nominate David. It's a lot of, a lot of verbiage there. All right, wonderful. Okay, 11.2 clerk. Do we have any nominations for clerk?
Nominate Amy.
All right, all right. Motion was made by Raleigh, seconded by Sandy to nominate Amy. Any other nominations for clerk? Hearing no other nominations. Raleigh moved and Sandy seconded motion to cast unanimous ballot for Amy as clerk. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All others, nay? No, mere motion carries. Okay, on to treasurer. Do we have a nomination for treasurer?
I'll nominate Raleigh.
All right, Ronnie. Is there a second for that?
One second.
Seconded by David to nominate Raleigh as treasurer. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations. Ronnie moved. David, seconded motion to cast unanimous ballot as for Raleigh for treasurer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion carries. Okay, 12.0. This is our consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Do I do the motion first, Sandy, or do I read this stuff down there? Oh, you gotta read bills.
Yep.
Okay, we'll do all this first. Here we go. It's our business.
This time around, $254,087.54.
All right, we also have a donation from Northwestern Bank in the amount of $522.34 for the DGF lunch program, and a resignation of Daisy Trautman, food service effective December 20th of 2019. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Sandy. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Laura. Any questions? Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nay? Motion carries. Okay, 13.0, or 13.1, set 2020 board compensation. I don't think we received anything in our packets, or, I don't even.
Well, it's, it should be on your, your deal that you fill out, as far as what those rates.
Okay.
So if you want, yeah, because that form lists what the rates are.
Okay, so I'll just read it out loud, our, loud. Yearly stipend chairman, 500 clerk, treasurer, 125 regular and committee meetings, $60 for up from, up to two hours and $75, two to four hours. Over four hours, set a daily rate of 120. $120 daily per diem, and mileage is the current federal rate. Does anybody have any, wanna have any discussion about changing that, or are we comfortable with the, what we did last year?
I guess I'm comfortable with keeping it as it is.
Yeah, I agree.
Didn't we change it last year?
Yeah. How often does it change?
We leave it the same.
Okay. Motion made by Ronnie.
The last time it had been changed was obviously last January, but prior to that, Sandy, what was it?
It had been many years.
Yeah.
Before.
Yeah.
I said I started at $40 a meeting, and 16 years later, it's up to $60.
All right. So we have a motion by Ronnie. Do we have a second?
One second.
Seconded by David, and we're gonna keep the regular meetings at $60. And special meetings, committee meetings at $60, correct? And mileage, meals paid at established board set rate in July, extended meetings per diem held during the day, set at $120 daily. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those not? I can't remember what you used to say. No, I'm just saying.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Opposed, there we go. You think after three years of listening, you might have absorbed it or something. Okay, that motion carries. Okay, so in your packet, we're looking at setting, 13.2, set the 2020 board meetings. There is an insert in our packet with the proposed dates, I believe.
Right on the email.
Maybe, or it was in, it was in an email. Did everybody have any questions?
I kept them to the first and the third Mondays.
Second and fourth, you mean?
Second and fourth, not first and third, yeah. Yeah, second and fourth.
And just to clarify, our location is here.
Still be meeting at the high school here in the media center.
I'll probably do my yearly objection just of the summer due to timing, but then I can go with whatever, you know, I'll go with whatever the board decides.
Okay.
I may vote opposite it, so.
That's okay. Do we have a motion to set the 2020 board meetings?
So moved.
So moved by Amy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Raleigh. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
For the record, six yes, one no. All right, motion carries. 13.3, certified seniority list. That is in your packet. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Raleigh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sandy. Is there any discussion or questions?
One thing, just so that everybody knows, lots of questions come up from people about, on the seniority list, the expiration date on licenses. And they, if the public, if somebody sees that it's one year off, it isn't one year off. When people go to the state's website, which is all public, and they put a person's name in, they can see the license, okay? Anybody can see that. There's two pieces of information on that website. One shows the actual license that was printed out, one shows the details. Some of you may recall that two or three years ago, there was a extension of one year on to everybody's licenses because of going to Pelsby. So what happened was, they didn't want to go through the cost of issuing new actual, you know, actual licenses. So what you're seeing on the website for the actual license is actually showing a year earlier than their true expiration. So the details part clears that up. So if you ever get asked some, something from somebody in the public saying, this person doesn't even have a license because I checked online, you may have to tell them, check with the office, and/or maybe you want to look at the detail part instead. Because the detail for a lot of licenses is one year greater than what shows for the license online.
So each number is either correct?
These are the correct, Brooke always goes to the details part to make sure that we're completely up to date. I think she was answering probably six or seven staff members' questions about it. So it's a confusing one for a couple more years.
Is this the final one, or?
This is the final one.
Second meeting, which is the right word to use on the motion.
Um, well, this is the final, because we don't, we don't necessarily have to, after, 20 days after the first reading, if there hasn't been someone bringing forward a dispute, then it becomes final, so at the next board, actual board meeting, it is final then. And because we take that amount of time in between the first two, this will be the final. This is, from this point on, this is the seniority list that's used in the ULA process, if we're going to have any ULAs, which I do not anticipate.
So should we call this final as a motion?
Yeah, I think it would be good, second and final.
People may think second and then think there's another one coming or something, so.
That's a good, yeah.
All right, so well, it'll, motion, it'll read, a motion was made by Raleigh, seconded by Sandy, and duly carried to approve the final reading of the 2019-2020 certified seniority list.
Awesome.
Are you good with that?
Yep.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, 13.4, lane changes. Was this in our packet, or is it just?
I hope so. Needs to make changes on this stupid thing.
Okay. All right, so we have our lane changes right here. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Any discussion or questions?
So this is just the bottom six, then?
Correct. This is a good thing for those on negotiation team to take a look at the cost because of what we put into the matrix that we utilize for negotiations. Because it's always about ballpark estimate in negotiations.
All right, any other further discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anything, anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, 13.5, we are going to table that. So the reason being is it's not quite prepared yet, is that correct?
So, no, you'd see.
We'll discuss it down in the cities.
Oh, okay, that's right, thank you.
I don't think we need to, we don't need to table it because it was taken off of the.
The front, oh, okay, perfect, okay.
It'll just need to be in the minutes, but when you'd set the agenda, that we were mooted at that, in the motion.
In the motion, okay. So actually, the next one will be 13.5, so you can adjust your numbers, the non-certified contract. This is a contract for Lauren Summers, paraprofessional, effective January 21st, 2020. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Sandy, do we have a second?
Second.
We've heard it first, Raleigh, I think Raleigh went first. Any questions?
Is this special ed, or where does this type?
Yeah, basically, unless it's a title deal, every parent, we have a special education.
Any other questions? Any other questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
They're going to be very happy.
All right, 13.6 is the 2019-2020 calendar, school calendar changes.
So my recommendation to the board would be that, and it's, it's on the school calendar anyways, potential start dates. It's too early to not take advantage of when we can make updates, in my mind. So the first two that are listed on the website are the February 17th for the President's Day Monday, and the second one is March 16th, the Monday. There's like a four-day weekend. We can't do the Friday, the 13th because they have parent-teacher conferences during that week. So if you want to, that's why that one's bypassed, because whenever we have those, they've got to have so many hours in the week and can't go over, hold out. So my recommendation would be to have school on those two days to make up for the two storms, two days we lost because of the rough issues.
Do we have a motion for the school calendar changes?
So moved.
Motion by David, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Now this is to hold school on February 17th, which is President's Day and March, Monday, March 16th. Okay, any other discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, 14.0, board commitments and future agenda items. Our next board meeting is going to be on Monday, January 27th, 2020, at 6:00 PM here in the DGF High School Media Center. At that time, I will bring it down to our MSBA, we'll bring down the sheet of all our committees and talk about who would like to be on, if you want to try a different committee or if we want to shuffle some things. So we can talk about that down there. For the public, all seven of us will be going down to MSBA and will be there, we have Wednesday, we'll be heading down, and we have Thursday and Friday, we have meetings, so. And yeah, it should be good. As I said, John Caniones is going to be our speaker. Who doesn't know John Caniones from Dateline?
Question as far as next board meeting, it's Monday, but then are we all meeting Monday at 6:30?
No, on the 20th, it should be a committee from, from the board. Because it'll be a committee of, from the finance and what else not. So that was my next question, as far as, do you want, since we don't have the committees yet, do you want the officers, or how do you want to decide on who's going, who should be there, who can be there, you could do it by, who can be there or can do the officers? I mean, probably want to keep it to three.
I kind of thought we had initially talked about operations, if they're available to go.
Problem is, we don't have them.
We don't have a formal operation.
Oh, we don't have a formal operation, okay. Who is, who's interested in going? Let's start with that.
Inavailable.
Inavailable. I don't believe I'm available next Monday.
So it's 6:30 Monday.
Next Monday. I would if.
And I'll get it confirmed in the morning.
I can, I can go.
I'm available, maybe, but whomever, I mean, if somebody really wants to go.
Okay, how do I do Ronnie, Raleigh, and Sandy?
And then if we, if one can't make it, you could be an alternate.
Yep.
Let's do that.
Let's do that. And you'll send out a meeting invite when it's confirmed?
You got it.
Okay. Any other things we need to throw into the universe?
What time is dinner on Wednesday?
That's important.
You got it, that's the important stuff.
Yeah, 6:30, we are going to go to Murray's and celebrate Sandy.
What date, Thursday?
Wednesday.
We're celebrating you all week.
Murray's is Wednesday, Thursday is Thursday.
Thursday's.
Thursday's Zalo.
Zalo, yep.
Where is that one at?
Just around Nicollet Mall.
Don't town.
Yep.
Yeah, it's right next to a really good place for breakfast. I saw where it was, and I.
Oh, yeah, no, it's the farm, um.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's really good.
It's really, Hen House, Hen House, super good, super good. Okay, all right, so, does anyone have the time? It's 6:40 and meetings are adjourned.